Okay, good evening, everybody. Meeting number 21 is called to word. This is November 5th, 2018. It is 5:30 PM. We are in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, roll call, please.
McCambell.
Here.
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Graham Murray.
Here.
All right. Tonight, we have three Mayor's Awards, and we also have a new award that we are just giving out and unveiling tonight. It's an exclusive, so let's get right after it. This first gentleman, I've known for quite a few years. I purchased candles from him from time to time. He wears a lot of hats, does a lot of things, but most importantly, he's involved and he cares about his community. And he was on the radio the other day, and I heard his voice about Operation Christmas Child, I believe. And I was just reminded of how much stuff you do, and you're all about it. It's like, man, I've got to recognize Rick, and I'm just blessed to be in this position to be able to recognize you tonight. So, be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your caring heart, your thoughtfulness, and your commitment to Operation Christmas Child and this community helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. A November 5th, 2018, this Mayor's Award is presented to Rick Mellinger. Please come on down. Always give these away to the cool kids. Aw, man. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate you. Sorry, I'm going to bring you down, get a picture taken with me and whatnot. You can tell everybody that you don't know me. Please, would you come over here and have a word?
Well, first of all, thank you for having me. You say I wear a lot of hats, but I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that make a lot of the stuff that happens that people like me or anybody else that does a lot of good for the less fortunate, whether it's here in the community or abroad, whether it's doing somebody's laundry, packing a shoebox, it doesn't matter. There's a lot of behind the scenes that don't get any recognition like you're recognizing me tonight, and I appreciate all of you, and just continue to keep doing what you're doing, and thank you very much.
You keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.[260.45][260.45][applause] And for the record, you really married up, my friend. Good job. We're proud of you. Proud of you.
And if you get a chance to go on Facebook and watch the kids opening the boxes, it's really moving. They're shrieking, these little boys are shrieking like a bunch of, they're so excited. It just really, really warms your heart. Thank you for all you do.
Well said, Peanut Butter. The next award that I'm going to give out, I'm going to give them at the same time because I know how they roll, and they're all about team, and they're working together, and no person stands out above the other, so I'm just going to fill in the name at the end. But I had an issue where, you know, we talk about different departments and things like that, but when the heat is on and you need them, that's when you really find out how important they are, and the talk becomes real, and it becomes personal. And it got real and personal for me. My daughter, she's a diabetic, and I found her on the floor the other day, and I had to call for the boys. And, man, they showed up quick, fast, in a hurry, and calmed me down even. And it was just a blessing to have good staff and put in me at ease so they didn't have to take two people to the hospital that day. But I want to recognize you guys, and I know we've got a department full of great guys just like you, but it was you two that showed up for me, and so I'm recognizing you two today. Be it known, you can't teach class or learn it. It is innately in a person's being. I came up with that line myself, just because I thought it was phenomenal. You exemplified that type of service and professionalism. From the bottom of my heart, I thank you. People like you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November 5th, 2018, these Mayor's Awards are presented to Garrett Johnson and Andy Crooks. Please come on down. Come on up.[369.00][369.00][applause] I didn't hear them say some kind of best, like, "We're just doing our job." Some people do great work. We give you one of these, all the cool kids. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your hand. I appreciate you. I appreciate you two, Andy Crooks. I'm going to get a picture taken with you guys so I can look like I'm somebody. Winners, my friend. Gentlemen, please.[406.12][406.12][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like you said, just another day at the office. Appreciate the opportunity that you all give me personally, and then everybody else down at the fire station. We all kind of love what we do every day, so thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's my pleasure to serve Burlington, and there's a lot of people involved. It's teamwork, it's not just one of us, so thank you. We appreciate it.
We've got a lot of winners in this town. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that. I am missing, Ryan is not here tonight. Okay, so we'll get him next week. Mayor's Award winners, I'm going to let you guys dip on at her here. You don't have to stick around for the rest of it, but thank you.
I just told Ricky to stay for the whole meeting.
Oh, did you?
Just kidding.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Keep doing what you do.
Amen to that. Pass that down to Kathleen. For me, please.
Kathleen.
Okay. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have four resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution providing for reduction of interest rate for sewer revenue bond. The third is a resolution approving an amended agreement with Midwest Truck Advertising for professional advertising services on city buses. And the fourth is a resolution approving lease agreement for the basement of the building at 501 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. We also have three hearings set for November 19th. The first is a consideration of an amendment to ordinance number 3220, an ordinance creating the Sunrise West Plan Unit Development, PUD, overlay district by making changes to Section 4 land use requirements. The second is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 161 Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. And then the third is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 1006 Elm Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, and we have some appointments as well. Mayor Proton?
Yep. For the Parks Advisory Committee, we have Zachary James and Don Hazel. The Renewable Energy Committee, Justin Norona. And the Water Works Board of Trustees, Charles Brockett. And thank you all for serving on those boards.
Well said. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? I see none. Counsel?
None.
None listed.
Any motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under the Item I consent agenda, please.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 58.19 to Motorized Vehicles of Chapter 58 Noise Control of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved in second. Chief, are you, you want to be eye candy for us for a minute?
I sure can. Nothing new has come up, has come to my attention since the first reading. I've received no input, no calls, so basically this ordinance will go into effect. Within the city limits of Burlington, we're going to post signs at the city limits. The most affected area is probably down here at the US 34 Bridge, the front street exit and coming across the bridge onto Main Street westbound, so we'll get those signs. I've been in contact with DOT and started the, I guess, the work to get that done.
Okay. Sounds good.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 58.19 Motorized Vehicles of Chapter 58 Noise Control of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for the final adoption of an ordinance amending 58.19 Motorized Vehicles of Chapter 58 Noise Control of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on the amendment.
McCambell.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
McCambell.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Okay, moving forward from that one now. Yes, sir.
I was going to say, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving an agreement for a Revitalize Iowa Sound Economy Project, RISE Project, in Flint Ridge Business Park.
Second.
This resolution would approve an agreement with the Iowa DOT for the RISE grant application that we submitted for a new road in the Flint Ridge Business Park. Eric, if you could throw the map up to indicate the project that we're talking about. Initially, as we talked about it prior to application, we had talked about bringing the road all the way from West Burlington Avenue to its future connection at Broadway. When we were in conversation with the DOT for the application process, they would not, I guess, fund the extent between the end of the red line and where the intersection would be, as long as access was given to Lot 3, which is the southwest lot that you see. So in the application, we reduced that cost and gave them that estimate. We have now since received the 50-50 grant to fund that section of roadway. What you see above you is, if you would show the Excel file then, too, the full cost, that cost section was brought down to 834, or no, 418 apiece, so 836 and change. And then the rest of the sections, as you can see, include the city roadway extension, or the Broadway extension further down, also include the parking that we had discussed with the indoor rec facility on city property that's immediately adjacent to kind of a driveway and the trail. And then the last thing that we hadn't talked about until last week that is on there is a new trail extension between there. As you bring more traffic down there, we felt that it was necessary for safety factor to move the trail in between the Broadway extension and then the parking. So that is the full extent of cost that you see up there that we would like to bid out this spring, but ultimately, all you're approving in this resolution is just the RISE grant application.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
So the trail, Nick, is that on the map?
That is the, in between the yellow parking and then the extent of blue Broadway.
I see it, okay.
Because as you see now, it just is kind of uses the roadway or the trail right there.
I know I asked this question last week, but how much more money are we spending than we were planning on spending as a result of this?
Previously, the full requested amount was 520. It amounts between 80 and 100,000. And we're using TIF to finance the match portion of this RISE grant.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution amending sewer user fees effective July 1, 2019, annual adjustments through July 1, 2023.
Second.
Stephanie?
Yes, so the schedule that's in the packet is showing the five-year plan. The unmetered is going to go up 3% each year, and then the metered is scheduled to go up 10%, and this is to help us when we go with our consent order to negotiate that we have these kind of locked in.
This was previously discussed during the sanitary sewer rate study of the presentation that was made. It's something that we've been doing for the last, I don't know how many years, increasing the unmetered by 3%, and then the metered because of the amount that they're paying due compared to the unmetered, trying to bring them up to more of an even playing field.
Right on. Questions or concerns from the audience? You guys are fantastic tonight, all two of you. All right. Counsel? Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of Park West subdivision. Second.
Mr. Tisdale, I mean, Mr. Tisland, sorry about that. Oh, this is No Shave November. I was about to give you a hard time, but now I get it. Does this every year.
This is a 16-lot subdivision located south off of West Avenue. This has gone through the preliminary plat process previously with the City Planning Commission voting 3 to 0 to recommend approval, and City Council approving the preliminary plat 3 to 0 in October of 2017. The final plat meets all the requirements of Chapter 170.80 subdivisions of the City of Burlington. A couple of the conditions of approval, Lot A shall become a city street upon acceptance by a separate resolution of the City Council. That's gone through the inspection process. Talked to Jesse last week, and everything seemed okay with that, but that would be a separate resolution probably at one of the upcoming meetings. As you note on the plat in the packet, Lot A is Horizon Street. Temporary easement for turnaround on Lot 9, which is near the southern end of the subdivision, shall remain in effect until such time as the street is extended or connected through. This was part of the discussion with whether a cul-de-sac would go in here or not, and this dead end does allow future connection for this whole area to open it up, but we do need a turnaround for public services. And then the stormwater detention area at the back of lots 13 through 16 shall be maintained by the Developer Related Homeowners Association so that it continues to operate as required for proper flow of stormwater. And again, this is 16 lots. It is Zoned R2, which will allow a single-family and/or duplex development within this area.
Do we have any questions or concerns or comments from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
We were able, in the last week, we were able to work out the issue between the gentleman that lives on the, in the house that's just been redone regarding the piece of property there, but who's going to maintain that? Were you able to work that out or?
I'm just going to go ahead and pave the sidewalk there. You do want to wait, but I already had it planned, put the sidewalk there, so I can get it and do that.
And that was shown on the preliminary plat, four sidewalks on both sides. That was previously approved.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Satisfied?
Yes.
Kathleen?
McCambell.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all night lighting service in the Sunrise West subdivision. Second.
This resolution, it was actually moved from the consent agenda from last week based on my recommendation to not approve. This resolution is something that came up actually last year, and a similar request from the Sunrise West subdivision, they requested four mid-block streetlights of the same nature of the ones that are currently there, just upgraded to LED. They have a little bit different setup than, they're the same general shape, but the LED and then the glass that they use a little bit different. But ultimately, Sunrise West was wanting to install these. They were going to pay for the installation, and then the city would absorb the monthly bill for these. There was a little bit of difference in the amounts that were spoken about in the letter for installation and monthly charge versus the ones that I had received from Alliant. I think that's due to the increase of cost that Alliant had. The installation cost was about 25, it was $2,560, and then the monthly bill was $7.25 per light per month. So my recommendation is the same as it was last November. Due to the light and the impact that it would not have on the area, my recommendation is to not recommend approval.
Okay, recommendation received. Any comments from, sorry. Any comments, concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
What, so your recommendation has been for the longest time for them to redo the existing lighting so that it's more efficient, and then evaluate at that point whether or not it's necessary, correct?
Correct.
And have they shown any interest in doing that?
No. Maybe my original suggestion was to install more traditional Cobra head lights than actually, like, they don't want those because of the aesthetic value, that they don't want a wood pole with the Cobra head, and I understand that. But the lights that are up there now do not provide adequate enough lighting for those areas.
They just need to add in more of those. If that's the lights they want to go with, they just need to put in more.
Well, and my rationale based on not recommending approval is several years ago, Alliant went through with the City of Burlington to remove a lot of the mid-block lights that were kind of overdone, especially when you consider what numbers ramp up to on a per-month basis that you're being charged for. So we went through and removed a lot of mid-block, not in this area, this is a new development, but this would be going back and adding to stuff that we had previously removed.
And you were able to remove those other ones because they were a different style light, and we didn't have the same problem. As I understand it, you've said it before, I just kind of want to get it on record, these lights are too high, and their design just does not provide what we're used to.
Do they make an aesthetically pleasing Cobra head style of light that would provide the efficiency that you think would work?
The best way that I think it could look fine is a steel pole with the LED Cobra heads. To me, they look kind of modern-looking. I don't know that that's the look that they're going for. To me, when, these are more lantern-based, kind of, you know, older feel, kind of downtowny feel, I feel like that's kind of the look that they want in that subdivision.
It is.
So.
But they're a lot taller than what we have elsewhere.
Correct. They're 20 foot in the air.
For that one, yeah.
We have some other ones that were part of subdivisions that we accepted where the lights were not something that Alliant was going to maintain. Our city staff maintains those. Those poles are like 12 foot off the ground.
Yeah.
So what is the cost savings between what they had before and what they're envisioning now?
This is new installation.
So they're picking up the installation.
They want more lighting for that area, but they...
And I side with them in wanting something that aesthetically pleasing. So our fee would be, what, about $30 a month?
725 times four, so 30 bucks a month.
Is there a way we can compromise so both parties get something? We're trying.
From my standpoint, I can't, I'm not going to move off my recommendation of not installing them until something is done about the other lights in that area. I just would hate to, would, not only that, but there's also a subdivision that we have coming up here that is going to want some of the same lighting, and I just see that snowballing. It doesn't take very many lights till all of a sudden now you have an extra $3,000 a month added bill because you've accepted and installed all these new streetlights. Streetlights need to be installed where they need to be installed, but if you have proper lighting, it isn't as much of an issue. And if you drive through there in the evening time, a lot of them have front lights on, and they're only 15 foot off the edge of the curb, that area is pretty well lit up at night. In the morning, it's a little bit of a different story, as people are still sleeping, they don't have their front lights on.
Okay, so let me ask you this. They pay for the installation of the lights.
Correct.
Would they ever be willing to pay the $30 for the fee, and then they could go ahead and this wouldn't be an issue? They would have the lights that want?
Based on that, based on the letter that I received and the process that they're requesting it to, I don't think they probably would. And there's a reason why they're requesting it of us to go through City Council to have those streetlights. If it was as simple as them wanting to put lights in that area, all they'd have to do is through a right-of-way permit. But they want the city to pick up the tab on...
Sure, I get that. I just hate to see, aesthetically, it could be very, very cool, and get dead-ended over $30 a month. I don't know. It just seems unfortunate.
Yeah, but I understand what Nick's saying, too, because he's right. We're going to have a lot of development in that area, and you start multiplying those lights by, I mean, if you think about that area, you could end up with 100 more lights. Well, that's...
And this actually, this happened last year where there was a few streetlight requests, and as people see them, and as it gets darker earlier at night, I think people see that, and they're more aware of the streetlight situation in their neighborhood. Out of last year's round, I recommended approval of three or four requests, and there was probably a total of 12. Just in certain areas, it does make sense to add street lighting. And, you know, I talked about a little bit last year on standards. I mean, I could send staff out at night with lumen readers, and there is a standard for residential area on the amount of lumens that are in the area, but I don't think that that makes sense. I think between PD and ourselves, determine whether or not it makes sense for lighting in that area. And then I guess ultimately for you guys to drive through the area and see what you feel needs. It's a judgment call ultimately, and I hate to say it like that. We wish you could have a standard set for it, but...
I went through it, and I have the same opinion you do. I think the better thing to do would be to encourage them to redo the current lighting so that it's more efficient, and then reassess it at that point.
I agree.
I know that there's aesthetically pleasing lighting out there that has a lot of the same benefits of Cobra-style lighting. I've seen it. It's probably a little bit more expensive, but they're already paying for a more expensive lamp anyways because of the aesthetically pleasing features that it provides, so I can't, can't vote to do something.
I see your point. I just know some of us sitting up here, we campaigned on Burlington's not perceived as being a safe place, and if we had more lighting, then, "Light it up! Make it safe."
Light it up. Right on.
Light it up!
We want to light it up the right way, though. There's a right way and a wrong way to light it up. All right, so satisfied? Let's put a vote where a mouth is, right? Okay.
So an a vote would mean you're approving it.
What's that now? Say that again.
An a vote would mean that you're in favor of the all-night lighting.
Of the four lights.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, McCambell?
No.
Rinker?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Okay, but the four of us that said no, we said it nicely, so...
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the Flint River Trail Phase, Iowa South.
Second.
Mr. Tisdale?
This is for the portion of trail along Bluff Road. We had kind of an extension while we were working out the easements with Lamont to get the necessary easements and extend the trail a little bit further with the remaining funds, but this is closed out as it is now. Our remaining portion is from that parking lot at Lamont up to Cash Street, which, as we apply for grants, hopefully can occur in the future and complete this portion of and, uh, this is just the final payment, release of retention monies.
Right on. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. It's been fantastic tonight. Counsel?
Come on here.
Okay. Let's get her done. Kathleen?
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
What a lovely meeting. This is the time that we will entertain comments from the audience. Is there anyone from the audience that has comments? I see none. Alrighty then. Mr. Tisland?
Nothing.
Kathleen? Peanut butter.
This Sunday is, uh, Downtown Open House, so make sure that you head on downtown. I believe it's 11 to 4, and you can get, register for some downtown dollars, I think $1,000, so be sure and support our downtown. Some great shopping experiences down there.
Well said.
And don't forget to vote tomorrow if you haven't already.
Well said. Counselor?
Vote tomorrow and, and, uh, that's it. Be safe.
MPT?
Um, yeah, just echo that it's, uh, important to vote, um, whichever way you're gonna vote, just do it and try to encourage others to do the same.
Gala.
What?
Say something about it.
What? Oh, yeah. And then over the weekend, of course, um, I was up to participate in the Burlington Fine Arts League.
You looked very beautiful, by the way.
Thank you. The gala, um, and that was a good time. It helped raise a lot of money for scholarships and other organizations who request funds, so...
I was there. I just said that you looked beautiful, waiting.
Thank you. You, oh, you were very dashing as well.
Well, thank you. Glad you noticed.
I love how neither one of you mentioned me.
Phillips said, "It's a shame to see you beg for it."
Sorry.
Counselor with the cool shoes.
She was beautiful. You were very dashing in your fine suit.
And you were very dapper.
So was your date.
Where'd you get those cool shoes?
The gala was amazing. We had a great time, and it did an awesome job of raising money for, uh, a lot of different things that I don't think a lot of people realize, but everything from, uh, art education, uh, in the schools, uh, to art in the community or different programs put on by, by different organizations, scholarships, everything like that, so, um... I would like to put a plea to the community. Somewhere in the world, there's a giant red popcorn bowl. It was holding about $30 of Halloween candy on my front door steps Halloween evening with a big, big sign that said, "Please take one." However, somebody didn't know how to read the sign and they took the whole bowl. Happened to be my...
Nick looks guilty.
Be my wife's favorite popcorn bowl, so I told her that I'd throw that out there. Media, you can help me out. We need a, uh, I got a, uh, picture. We can put a missing carton, milk carton thing out there.
This is important to the council.
It is. It is red popcorn bowl. Extremely important. Um, but yeah, other than that, please vote tomorrow. Please vote. It's important, uh, and, uh, please return popcorn bowls. I won't leave it down until it returns.
I know why that stick led me so. I didn't take it. I just found it funny.
Did you call it in, Matt? I walked the whole block. I'm like, who's, like, take the candy, but who steals the bowl?
It must be a really nice popcorn bowl.
It was. It was, and I, it didn't, my wife was at work and I had to take the girls trick-or-treating, but we tried to make sure that there's places for kids to trick-or-treat in our neighborhood, so I couldn't stay at home, but I wanted to make sure the light was on and there was candy we had, and they took more than that. So... There was some good stuff in there, too. There was.